Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Dayton Board of Selectmen. Wednesday, January 11th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall. Zoom meeting information, the meeting ID 825-74914469, passcode 645109. You may also log in by phone at 1305-224-1968 U.S. Public input may be provided using the following methods, contacting the office before the meeting at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov, via Zoom, call-in by phone. This meeting is being recorded and it will be continued play on Dayton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And again, this meeting is being recorded. At this time, I would like to, for the record, announce that Selectman Ken Pacheco is not in attendance this evening. Also, in attendance is Selectman Peter Karen. Good evening.
Good evening.
And Chairman Leonard Hull. We have an extensive list of members who have passed, so I ask at this time if we could stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence for town residents who have passed since our last meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for
Since our last meeting, the following members of the Dayton community have passed. Deanna Butler, Michael Farrell, Fisher Harsome, Keith Hayden, Maynard Horton Jr., Thomas Kelly, and most recently, our former assessor Carol Boragad. We ask that we keep these people in our thoughts and condolences to their families. Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing to discuss the opt-out vote by mail. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second the motion. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is also with us. At this time, I would ask that Town Clerk Mark Pacheco come to the podium. Before I ask Mr. Pacheco to address the audience here this evening and those on Zoom, I want to explain a few rules about this public hearing. One, the Board of Selectmen will not be voting this evening on this. We will listen to public input, we will take it under advisement, and we will vote at the next meeting. As you're well aware, Mr. Pacheco is not here and he will be reviewing the meeting and what public comment is. Secondly, this is not a debate. You are not here influencing the voters of the town of Dayton. You are here influencing the three members of the Dayton Board of Selectmen, who will be voting on this issue. So, we ask that you keep your comments to no more than five minutes. With that being said, Mr. Pacheco?
Thank you.
Do you set the groundwork so we all know what we're voting for and what the public can anticipate?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me, the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for the public who came out tonight for this issue. I really just wanted to reiterate the points I made at the Selectmen's meeting where I did ask for this public hearing. So, the Votes Act was signed into law on June 22nd, 2022. This Votes Act allowed for no excuse vote by mail for municipal elections. So, when this was signed into law, our budget was already in place, June 22nd, for this year. So, I came to you to ask for this with the idea it would save the town some money because any expense towards vote by mail would be deficit spending for my department. It wasn't budgeted. I'm saying this knowing that every voter would have the opportunity to vote in this election. If they can't make it on Election Day, they can vote via absentee by mail or in person. If they're out of town, if they can't vote due to religious beliefs or disability. So, I want to emphasize every voter who wants to vote can. But this is a new law. It's our first time navigating it, to vote by mail. And I look forward to hearing everyone's comments and hope to hear everyone's opportunity to speak their mind. It's, we're following the law as it's written. That's all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
Yes. Questions, no. Comments, yes. We're ready for comments?
Questions?
Questions, no, not at this time. I know last time you said that the cost was unknown and I would assume it still is at this point.
Yeah, I throw the number around $3,000, just factoring in labor, the cost of ballots, postage, but there's no data behind it because it'd be our first municipal election with vote by mail. So, it's just looking at what we've done in past elections and it's an educated guess, but it's certainly anywhere from perfect. That's my best guess.
And you've had, we have had no issues with the current way we vote, correct? As far as people not being given the chance to vote?
I have not had any comments about, you know, I couldn't vote on Election Day. I think we do a pretty good job of getting the information out there and our census, we mail everyone the date of the election. If, yeah, absentee voting has been around. People know to find us. If you vote absentee with us regularly, we do mail you an application every single year, just to make it convenient. So, no, I'm not aware of any issues. I look forward to hearing any if there are.
That's it, Lenny.
Just a matter of semantics, so we have this correctly spelled out for the agenda for the next meeting when we do vote. The question will be, do we opt out a vote by mail? Is that correct?
For the April annual town election. You have to have a public hearing for every town election if you want to opt out.
So, an affirmative would be to opt out and a no would be to keep things as they currently are?
Correct. A no is exactly because it's signed into law. So, if you vote no, then we will continue with the law as it's written.
Does anyone, before I open it up to public input, have any questions for Mr. Pacheco? Donna, please. Could you state for the record your name and your address?
Donna Burdo's 2396 Pleasant Street. Will there still be early voting in person?
So, early voting, they do for the state elections, but there's no early voting for the annual town election.
Mr. Gale?
I just want to clarify that for the town elections as well. Will any mail-in balloting take place or not based on a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Is there going to be any change in that process or not?
That vote will be taken at the next meeting.
No, I understand. I'm asking for clarification from Mr. Pacheco as to absolutely a thumbs up if you vote yes. Is that going to negate any mail-in balloting whatsoever?
Yes, if the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting vote to opt out of vote by mail, there would be no mail, no excuse vote by mail. If they vote no, then they would be voting not to opt out and therefore, no excuse early, no excuse vote by mail would be an affirmative for this election, yes.
So, a vote no would be as is?
Yes.
Things would stay the way they are? And that would or would not allow for any kind of mail-in balloting?
It would allow for it.
Just want to clarify. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, Andrew?
Andrew, moving forward, 28th ruling. To follow up on that, if someone wants to apply right absentee ballot, they're going to be out of town if want to apply, they'll apply for that or if they're staying at home, then that would, there'd be no vote or whatever that would affect that part of it?
Wouldn't affect absentee at all, so you could still, we have a, actually, we have an in-person absentee session at Town Hall. I think it's a Friday before the election and we, you can vote in person up until the election, up until noon the day before the election, and you can vote absentee via mail or in person. So, that wouldn't change and that's always been around.
Would you be able to, Mr. Gale, just speed it up?
Yeah, so you could do that via mail, yes, absentee, but absentee is an excuse. I can't make it to the election. And the difference is, vote by mail is no excuse vote by mail. Absentee is, I can't make it on Election Day due to, I'm out of town that day, I'm working, disability, religion. We don't ask you the reason. You just sign that you have a reason.
Mr. Dushkowsky?
Jennifer Dushkowsky, 2414 State Street. Just wondering exactly what problem you're trying to solve by opting out. You talked about financial?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That is the problem. And you named three things. You said labor, ballots, and postage, but labor would have been approved in the budget already at that point in time.
Not for the extra labor for voting by mail.
Is your staff hourly or are they salary?
Hourly.
They are, okay.
Yeah, I'm the only one that's salary.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I will?
Thank you.
And I will now turn to the public input section. Mr. Reynolds, please come to the podium. Then state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Reynolds. I live at 725 Main Street. I'm deeply grateful to call Dayton home. There's not enough time this evening to enumerate all of the things that make the small town with a big heart such a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. However, one thing that stands out is the level of civic and social engagement, participation, and dialogue that takes place here. We're a community full of people who love our town and we're no strangers to respectfully expressing our thoughts, feelings, and ideas. I believe that the free exchange of ideas not only fosters engagement, but transparency and accountability in government, as well as a diverse vibrancy of ideas that only a robust discourse can provide. Simply put, civic engagement is the lifeblood of a free society and its beating heart is everyone who takes part in the life of their community. The question confronts us now of what role voting by mail plays in this civic participation. Voter participation is a good thing and it's something that we should encourage. Also, we are a small but growing town with needs ranging from infrastructure to education to public safety. Having limited dollars to distribute amongst the many needs in our community, I believe this issue deserves a thoughtful and objective analysis. If voting by mail is driving increased turnout in Dayton, promoting accessibility, reducing marginalization, and fostering voter inclusivity in a way which represents an improvement upon our historical process, then one could say that the increased expenses are money well spent. However, if it's not, and we are merely incurring additional expenses for conveniences' sake, then perhaps the increased costs associated with it are money better spent elsewhere in our community. It is my opinion in this matter that politics should be put aside and the facts should be allowed to speak for themselves. I took the liberty of requesting from the Town Clerk's office voter turnout information from the midterm elections of 2022 and 2018 so that I could make an apples-to-apples comparison of the effect vote by mail had on an overall turnout. Additionally, I requested the population census information from both years as well to lend additional context for comparative analysis. In 2022, the town of Dayton had 6,111 registered voters, of whom 3,234 voted in the midterm election. To restate, in 2022, there were 3,234 votes cast in the midterm for 42, excuse me, 52.9% voter turnout. In the prior midterm election in 2018, Dayton had only 5,445 registered voters, a difference of over 660, yet 3,270 ballots cast for just over 60% voter turnout. Even with hundreds fewer voters, Dayton had not only more total votes, but a significantly higher percentage share of voter engagement before universal vote by mail was implemented. As I stated earlier, if vote by mail is having a measurably positive impact on turnout and voter participation, then it's a good thing. If it allows our friends and neighbors living with disabilities to vote, or working parents unable to make it to the polls to vote, then it's a good thing. However, vote by mail does not exclusively accomplish these things, as our traditional voting process already has absentee ballot provisions for those who are unable to vote for reasons such as I have just stated. Thus, if we are merely incurring additional expenses by adopting a more costly alternative to our traditional process without additional tangible benefit, then I do not believe instituting vote by mail for our upcoming spring election would necessarily be good stewardship of our limited dollars. Allowing the numbers previously mentioned to speak for themselves, from a purely data-driven, apolitical perspective, I believe that the data suggests that vote by mail is not appropriate in this upcoming election. It's with deep gratitude that I thank the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to address them, as well as the other members of my community this evening, and I sincerely thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Ms. Dushkowsky, please come to the podium.
Hi, Jennifer Dushkowsky, 2414 County Street, Dayton. I asked the question about what problem we're trying to solve by removing vote by mail or opting out of vote by mail for the April town election. The reason that I ask that is because we have not yet experienced an annual town election with vote by mail implemented. And so, therefore, we don't have any hard data on actually what the costs would be. So, we don't really know what would be, what we would be saving as a town. I would say that instead, it would behoove us to go through the process, get the data behind what it actually costs and how many people actually participate so that we can move forward with an informed decision. In 2018, the world was a very different place than it was in 2022. I think we can all agree we've been through quite a bit with the pandemic. Things happen that we don't anticipate. Someone comes down with COVID and is not able to appear in the polls in person. They can't apply for an absentee ballot at the very last minute, but a no cause vote by mail ballot, they would be able to have that in their possession. So, it is my opinion that I think that we want to have as many people participating in our town as possible and as many people welcome to participate in our government as possible. And one of the ways that we can do that is by supporting vote by mail and getting the data behind it so that if in the future we do find out that not a lot of people are utilizing it, or there is a significant cost to it, then we can make that informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gale? If that works for you, yes. See, the easy reason being is the microphone for the TV is?
Jonathan Gale. My address, 22 Waterford Circle. And I'm speaking as a resident, but also as the ADA coordinator, if that's okay?
Certainly.
Okay. As the ADA coordinator for the town, what I want people to consider is, it's been mentioned already that nobody wants to inhibit anyone with accessibility needs from voting at all. What I will remind people, however, is the population of the town overall is getting older. It's estimated, not necessarily in this town, but overall, it's estimated nationally that approximately 20% of everyone has a disability of some sort. Some people can vote in person, some people can't. Many of the seniors can't get out and vote because of their disability or because they don't drive. Many of the veterans can't get out and vote in person because of their disability or because they don't drive. People such as me may be able to get out and vote and use the alternative voting methods if we have transportation. If I don't have transportation in my own case, I could not get there and vote. Now, I'm willing to be self-identified. There are a lot of people with disability in this town who prefer to keep their disabilities private. They don't want to be self-identified. There's no requirement for them to have to be self-identified, but that's a significant percentage of the population. And I think if you look at all of the residents who use primetime, for example, knowing that many of those residents don't drive themselves and don't have an ability to get out, they otherwise wouldn't be able to participate. And as I said, that also goes to residents of our town who are veterans. And we have a very large veteran population compared to many of the towns around us. So, I think we have to consider that, too. Also, with regard to other disabilities, there are a myriad of disabilities that are not common and not easily recognized that prevent people from going to a voting place. That could be anything from alcoholism, which is a disability, drug abuse and addiction, which is a disability, autism, Asperger's because of lighting, because of noise in a room. Again, if people aren't able to self-identify, don't know how to self-identify, or don't want to self-identify but want to vote, and they're not able to, then they're being excluded from the process. I understand and clearly appreciate the fact, especially given the town budget potential these days, that there's a concern about the budget and trying to zero fund and so forth, future type of aspects of the budget. But this is one of those areas, yes, it wasn't planned for. I don't think that any town necessarily, or most towns, would have planned for this in advance. So, we're not the only town in this situation. We are a small town, which means fortunately, the increased expense is going to be minimal compared to some of the larger towns or the cities in Massachusetts. I'm not suggesting that that should negate it either, but I do think clearly, if you're going to consider a thumbs up, thumbs down, you need to consider the wider population of the town who is, for any reason, not able to get to the Town Hall and vote, or to the school and vote. A lot of people don't even access to technology to know that there's something on the website giving them alternative methods of voting. So, I'm asking you to, I'm not going to say which way you should go and whether you should vote thumbs up or thumbs down. I think I've made my perspective clear as the ADA coordinator, but I really do believe, as I said, that every single resident in town deserves the opportunity to vote. And if residents can't make it, then unfortunately for those who are not able to otherwise speak for themselves, they're left out of the voting process. Our government is built on every single person having the opportunity and I think we need to respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Gula, excuse me, 631 Gray Terrace, North Dayton. I concur with what this lady and what Mr. Gale just said. Any votes that we can get out that people have not voted for whatever reason before, I think it's important that we get it out. I think there has to be a good campaign ahead of time if we are going to do this so people know they have that option. I equate this with trying to get more people to come out and vote to the difficult times we had when I was on the Board of Selectmen, both prior to my return in '15 and from '07 to '10. We did everything we possibly could to get more people to attend town meeting. We've always expressed the concern, people don't come out. Less than 100 people show up and approve $20, $30 million worth of expenses, and then they wonder, why are the taxes so high? What we finally did, and it was not the most costly way to do it, it probably turned out to be the least expensive, that's when we started mailing the annual town meeting warrant as a box holder to everybody. They can't say they didn't know. If they get mail in this town, they got one. We haven't seen a huge increase, but we do know that the contents of that warrant are out there. So, we got out all the information we could. My concern is, I've used vote by mail myself for the elections when it was available. I think that some of the data that we could get by doing this at least once is not only how many people, is there an increase? We can also determine, if I'm understanding this correctly, the age range of people who are voting. Because you have to apply, is there an application to vote? All right, so you at least know the name of the person, which would give us data about the age range of those voting. You know, they say the younger people don't vote, and then you hear somebody say they came out overwhelmingly. I guess it depends on where you live, but I think that's important data and I think it's worth giving it a shot at least once. And then, from a financial standpoint, if it's not practical or there's, it seems to be there's no interest, it has to be looked at again. Do we have the option, if the Selectmen allow this to go forward and we do it from an election, do we have the option to then rescind that vote or take other action?
So, it's, you have to do it for every election?
Oh, okay.
If we don't, this one?
That's even better.
There you go.
Initial shot, see what comes out of it. Is it worth doing it again? So, that's what I would support if I was sitting where you are right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Gula, thank you. I do have a question, Mr. Pacheco. Mechanically, if we vote to continue vote by mail for this upcoming election, how would you handle the process? Would you send out ballots to everyone in the town and then if they wanted to vote by mail, they would just send it back like they did the state election? Or would you take applications?
The state mailed everyone an application. I think it was like 45 days before the election for both the primary and the general. We're not required, even if you vote, to have no excuse vote by mail. We're not required to mail everyone an application. That would be an added expense. That's, I guess I would?
How much did that cost you? I mean, it would be the same number, the same expense as the state. How much did that cost you?
It'd be a postcard for every, so they did it for every registered voter, but we could do it for every household. They have a new application for that. I could price it out and have it for your next meeting.
Absolutely.
I think that would be a good idea. And I'd really like to hear what the, what you guys think, if that's something you want. If not, we could do, you know, the town website. We can post it where we post our warrants throughout town and you could, we could use the message boards. But we're not required to mail an application to everyone so they could come to Town Hall. We could mail one if that was important to the town and I would be amenable to it. It'd be another deficit spend, but we could do it.
Let's see what the money, let's look at the money.
Yeah, it would be, and we could, yeah, we could do a family application to every household in town. So, yeah. Could I also, could I comment on the Mr. Gale's comments at all? I just have some information that might be relevant in my mind.
Not in a debate format, but if you have?
Some information.
You want to present to us, yes?
There's, so we have absentee voters and they have to apply every year. So, it's from January through December, but there's something else that's called a permanent absentee voter. And that's someone who, that's, instead of vote by mail, you have to apply every year. Absentee, you have to apply every year. A permanent absentee voter can apply once and as long as you live here, as long as you're a registered voter, will mail you a ballot for every election. You need a doctor's note to say you have a permanent disability, but it's not a public record. As far as self-identifying, it would be in my office, but I can't share it. It's not public. We do not have any permanent absentee voters in town. But if we do, as far as convenience goes, it's one application for life. You don't have to apply every year. It's not a calendar year thing. Vote by mail is a calendar year thing. Absentee is, but if you're a permanent absentee voter, it's not. So, I think that's relevant, too. That exists.
Thank you. Jen?
Yeah, I just had another sort of a mechanical question about how it works. No, if you have information. When I was reading on the Secretary of State's website about the law and the application that was sent to all households about? that was sent to all households about mail-in voting, that application is also available for print on the Secretary of State's website.
Yes.
So my understanding was, I fill that out once for all elections that happen, and if my town opts out, then the town doesn't send me a ballot. But if my town has not opted out, then the town would get a list from the Secretary of State who gets sent a mail-in ballot, and then those would be sent out. Is that not correct?
No, the application's on the website. It goes to the town, the election office of the town. So it would be my office in the case of Dayton, and we would process your application. And it's only good for the calendar year. So whatever you applied for last year expired on December 31st.
I understand that.
So this year-
But it covers all of the elections for the year?
All elections for the year.
Yeah, so unless the town opted out, the town would have to send me a ballot?
Yes, I have not received any applications this year, so I haven't got any. But yes, if you did apply for it and they did not opt out, you would be automatically mailed a ballot.
Thank you. And they can apply up to 45 days in advance?
I think it's much closer than that.
Oh, so you can continue to apply?
Yeah, we mail it out 45 days in advance, but it's, I don't know, it's like a week before or something like that. It's not, the timeline's much closer to the election that you could apply to.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Mr. Gale?
I just wanted to note, I know you were asking about a rough cost for a mailer, and just FYI, last year when the COD Commission on Disability did a mailer of a seven-by-nine post-sent mailer with color between the printing and the mailer to what's approximately just under 3,000 addresses, which includes all of the residents and the P.O. boxes, that figure was literally just under $1,000 by about $10. Maybe slightly higher now because of the printing, but I would guesstimate it's still going to be right around $1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further?
Donna Burdoz, 2396 Pleasant Street. I am totally against vote by mail, and I'm going to tell you why. I don't know if anybody remembers, just one comment that Joe Biden had made in the 2020 election. He proudly announced, "My party has put together the most extensive inclusive voter fraud organization in the history of American politics." I don't know if anybody remembers that. It didn't really get that much attention. I'm just going to give you some facts here. The judge, there's a judge in Delaware, and he stated that the vote by mail is unconstitutional. Texas passed a new law, it's the SB 1 law, and it calls for ID requirements. They had 18,000 mail-in ballots that were rejected under this SB 1 law. The state of California-
Excuse me, I feel like this is out of order, because you had said not a debate format-
No, I'm not talking about politics, I'm just saying some facts.
I will allow her to make her comment in regards to this.
Thank you.
And reasons for-
Okay. I'm trying to expose some fraud here. The state of California agreed to remove 1.5 million inactive names from voter registration due to a lawsuit that was brought on by the Judicial Watch. These were dead people and people that had moved, one and a half million. Texas Attorney General has conducted over 300 mail-in fraud investigations. I think how this started was with the COVID. They're saying that the voting polls are unsafe. I just think that's an excuse. A lot of people go out, they go, they're in crowds. This is not necessary. I think we all should vote in person. And lastly, I think that we cannot compromise the integrity of our election process or we threaten the future of our country. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, we have a person on Zoom who wishes to-
Yes, we have a Ms. Beeman.
Hi there. My name is Jessica Beerman. I live at 926 St. Wood Circle, and I appreciate you having a Zoom link here for this meeting so that I could participate. I would like to share a personal experience I've had with absentee voting. I feel that this town has incredible voting capacity. I've voted in person many, many times, and then I felt ill unexpectedly. I missed a town election, and I know that doesn't sound like too much of a big deal, but for me, it was. I've sat on a lot of committees for this town, and I volunteered in a lot of different groups that are highly political and will help our town grow. And I couldn't participate in the town election that year because my absentee vote wouldn't come in quick enough. I now am a very proud absentee voter, but that year I did miss a town election. I deeply regret that. When the no-excuse absentee voting came to be in Massachusetts, I was relieved for people like me that might be injured or disabled. These things are not something you can plan ahead for, for a fiscal year or a calendar year. These things come up by accident or by sad circumstance, and that's what happened to me. I would like to thank that everyone in this town deserves to vote, and I would like to also ask the Board of Selectmen to please consider how much voter fraud has happened in our town? That would be zero. So I'm really proud about how our town has handled voting in person and absentee, and I want to thank you all for doing that work. Thank you for listening to me via Zoom.
Ms. Beeman, thank you very much.
Tom Galucci, 2086 Palmer Street. I'm, of course, not in favor of mail-in balloting. I do think it's led us to the position that we're in right now, which is, you know, a country on its heels. Our little town has existed for 311 years as an incorporated town with vote in person and the occasional absentee ballots, maybe for soldiers that are away, people with disabilities, that kind of thing. I think we've gotten along just fine for 311 years. Now, we've had some great public servants recently. I think Mr. Pacheco is doing a phenomenal job. We can't always count on the goodwill of our public servants, however. So this is something, this is yet another way that we have to keep a check and balance on government. You know, if you'll recall, Washington said, "Government is not, government is not eloquence. It is force, like fire, a dangerous servant and a fearful master." Government has to be kept in check. One of the ways we can do that is with in-person voting. At some point in the future, as Samuel Adams said, vain and aspiring men will sit behind here, men and women, will sit behind that dais. And I think that the potential for voter fraud is great. Voter fraud is absolutely something that can happen, particularly in group homes, which I understand, Mr. Hall, you work in one?
That is correct.
Ballot harvesting is something that happened over the course of the 2020 and the most recent 2022 elections, the special elections in Georgia, where nongovernmental organizations came in and harvested ballots. If you watch the film 2,000 Mules by Dinesh D'Souza, you'll actually see people, and they've actually used data from these people's cell phones where they go and pick up the ballots and they deliver them to ballot boxes. And the corroborating evidence is there are video cameras over the ballot boxes as people are delivering dozens and dozens of ballots into them. So the potential for subverting an election is great, and as long as we can put the brakes on that, I'll be very happy. So I am in favor of doing away with mail-in balloting for this election. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gale?
I understand there are some folks waiting to be let in. I just got a text.
I don't see a hand raised.
They're waiting to be let into the meeting altogether.
Yes, everyone's in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gale?
I know we're not here to get into a debate, but I do feel, as again, in my role as an ADA coordinator, it's really important to comment on one specific comment that was just made, which is, you shouldn't differentiate that because a person in a group home wants to vote, and they may not have the wherewithal or the ability to understand the voting process the same way most of us in this room do, that that in any way negates their ability to vote or their potential to vote. Many people in group homes, in fact, most people in group homes often require assistance to read the ballot information, to have it read to them, to have it filled out for them for a variety of disability reasons, whether they're family disabled, or they're moderately disabled or mildly. They have that right automatically. Yes, they require additional assistance to do it. They require somebody to help fulfill out those ballots. And the theory, which I've never heard challenged, at least in this state, is that the people filling out those ballots are checking off the wrong boxes for them, whether it's by mail or in person at a ballot location. So I'm only commenting on that one component because I do not, as an ADA coordinator, feel it's appropriate to determine that people, simply because they have a disability, have a greater potency for falsifying their ballot or somebody falsifying ballots from them. We never, to my knowledge, in this state, had that investigated where anything has been found. There's been no Judicial Watch reports of that in Massachusetts. To my knowledge, unless I can be corrected, it has never been brought to the attention for falsification of anyone in this town. So I make that comment as a person who is an ADA coordinator and who was certified by the state as an ADA coordinator. I think that unfortunately, that part of the comment and the discussion should not have been made and should not have been allowed.
Mullin? The chairman did allow it, and he's accepting public input to make a decision whether he or Mr. Karen or Mr. Pacheco give it any validity. I believe that is up to us as individuals and as decision-makers to do that. Mr. Pacheco, I do have a couple of questions for you regarding absentee ballots. Whether they be for a reason or no reason. Do you have any way to solidify the signatures of those ballots that are coming into you?
The way the law is written, you verify the signature on the ballot to the signature on the application. Supposed to match.
Supposed to match.
That's the way the law is written.
In both the absentee ballot for a reason and no reason. They're the same.
Yes, yes.
There is no need, there is no requirement for a notary to sign.
There's, no, there's, there's limited circumstances where a notary is required. There's, we were talking about people who can't vote in an election because they fell ill. We had that where someone was in the hospital and a family member requested on their behalf, and in that case, we needed a notary to sign because they were requesting an absentee ballot on a family member's behalf. But in most, that's a rare circumstance. Generally, you don't need a notary to sign.
So there's the need for a notary if, to request a ballot?
On behalf of an immediate family member's for absentee, but-
But not to vote?
Not to vote.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, clarification, because a couple of folks, and I apologize for interrupting, but you had started off by saying this wasn't a debate, and we were talking about this election and opting out of this election. But a lot of points have been brought up about mail-in voting overall and in other states, which is not pertinent to this conversation tonight at all.
I, as I said a few minutes ago, that will be left to the determination of the three of us, how much validity we give those arguments, how much plausibility those arguments have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, you mentioned you had some comments.
Yes.
You are a citizen as well as a member of the Board of Selectmen, so-
Are we doing this now or are we waiting until next week?
I'm going to reserve my comments for next week.
Okay.
That's up to you.
Then I'll do the same with, I'd rather have Ken here-
Absolutely.
-to listen to the comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, yes, Mr. White?
I want to make a couple of- Doug White, 455 Forest Street, North Dayton. I would like us to opt out. I think anything that has the appearance of evil should be avoided, and I think that there's enough evidence that there's a lot of distrust. It's caused a lot of division having mail-in voting over the last couple of years. We have actually had an experience to do that in this town with the last midterm election. You voted in this town, you were able to mail in a vote. So we do have evidence. I don't think opting in just to see how it goes is a plausible argument because things that get put on rarely ever get removed, and even if there are problems, then you're back on your heels again. So I'm hoping that the board will opt out because there's ample opportunity for anybody to vote under the current circumstance. You can, you know, get an absentee ballot. You don't need just this carte blanche mailing to every household because now you've got applications out there, and anything can happen. So if there is nefarious intent, we have a great voting record in this town. We have a great voting record for a reason, because we have rules, because we have registration, because we have ample opportunity for people to vote, and I don't see any reason to add expense and change it for really no reason. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second the motion. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
I'm sorry, Mr. Karen? An aye.
And Mr. Hall is also an aye. Thank you very much. With that being said, the next item on the agenda is review, discuss, enact a request for use of tuition reimbursement program?
So, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a request from the town clerk in the current fiscal year to utilize the town's tuition reimbursement program, like in years seeking up to $2,000 in reimbursements for a certificate and election administration program. And we do have the available funding in the budget, and I am recommending that it be approved.
Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
No.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
I make that motion to approve the request.
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is also an aye. Next on the agenda, Superintendent of Schools, William Rooney. You wish to come up? Absolutely. Good evening, sir.
That's quite the attire, Mr. Rooney.
I have to represent at all times. Thank you for having me, and thank you for being patient with me not getting here on time, although I was told that I wasn't needed until 7:00, but the town administrator misled Although I'm here to talk about a really exciting event that we have at the high school, I want to start off with some recognition. The district is celebrating Law Enforcement Appreciation Week this week, and I want to just, again, personally thank Chief Cronin and all of his officers for keeping our students safe, keeping our staff safe, and for the phenomenal partnership that we've had, you know, at least in my tenure, in terms of making our schools safer. So I reached out to them, I reached out to Chief and also Detective Richards and our SROs on Monday, and district-wide today, a lot of our staff members and students wore blue in support of our police officers. So thank you for that. So one of the things that I've identified as a concern about our school district is that I really feel that there has not been a commitment to an understanding that this is a pre-K through 12-plus journey. this is a pre-K through 12-plus journey once, once families join our district. And what I mean by that is that we, we want students to come to us at, at the earliest age possible, and we want them to stay with us until such time as, as they graduate. The reason why I refer to it as 12-plus is because we have, we have some young people that are ages 18 to 22 that are on special education plans and, and we help them with their transition skills until, until they age out at 22. And I do, I do want to acknowledge that there are other outstanding options in our area. Bristol Plymouth is an excellent school, Bristol Aggie's an excellent school. There are some private schools that are available for our families. But I'm committed to, to helping people understand that Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School is just as good, if not better, based on what the needs of our students and families are. And so for us to be able to do that, we need to celebrate the great things that are going on. And so I'm very proud to be here tonight to share that next Thursday, January 19th, at the high school, we are going to have our first annual Green and Gold Open House. And at that open house, we are encouraging families of seventh graders, families of eighth graders, as well as the students, to come and join us that night to see all things DR. We also have some families that are considering us through the school choice process. We have some families that are considering us as transfers. That evening is, is open to them as well. The majority of the staff at the high school and many of our students at the high school are going to be at Green and Gold Night. You will have the opportunity to discuss the academic offerings with our staff members. You'll have the opportunity to meet with our students and our coaches and our club moderators about athletic teams, performing arts, student council, student government, Leo Club, so on and so forth. It's just going to be a, a true celebration of, of all things that we are at Dayton Rehoboth. And I also invite any community members that are interested in, in learning more about the high school and, and seeing the great things that we have to offer, to join us that night as well. It is not exclusive to prospective families. We would love to have as many community members come and join us for that night as possible. One of the things that I'm most excited is that our entire CTE staff is going to be there. And as I mentioned, Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie are fantastic options for our families in both Dayton and Rehoboth. But we have a hidden gem at the high school with the, with the vocational programs that we have. Early childhood education, engineering, automotive tech, marketing, there, these are programs that help make our students more marketable, whether they are heading out to college or whether heading out to the military or to the workforce. And our entire CTE department is going to be there that night along with their students to be able to show the wonderful things that are going on in both those labs and those shops. So thank you for the opportunity to be here and thank you again for your continued support.
Mr. Rooney, thank you for all the wonderful things you're doing and your staff in Dayton Rehoboth. There's a lot of excitement about education and student involvement in this town, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. With next on the agenda, Chief Cronin, could you come to the podium? The first item on the agenda is a proposal for Reserve Officer Compensation, an adjustment, midterm, mid fiscal year adjustment, I might add. I'm going to read part of the letter to you and then you can comment further. With a recent increase of the Massachusetts minimum wage amount to $15 per hour, I feel strongly about revisiting the pay rates of our part-time officers and dispatchers, which is currently just $17.33 per hour. These employees do a job today that many think is impossible, and they do it on a part-time basis. Their training is the same as our full-time personnel and the responsibility just as heavy. For years, I have felt that our part-time employees have been undercompensated for the responsibility we put on them and for the expectations that the public has of them. With the investment we have made into their development and for imperative operational and retention purposes, I'd like to propose the following pay adjustments to our part-time officers and dispatchers respectively. At this point, I, I'd like you to offer further comment, and, and I will explain shortly why I, I don't want to read the other, you know, the amounts.
Sure, sure, yeah. As you stated in, in my memo there, the first thing is, if you look at the comparative minimum wage and what a quote minimum wage job is, when I was, when I was growing up, minimum wage job was something to get you started. And when I look at it, and it's about 15% higher for somebody to go through all the training that they go through, have the responsibility they have to wear a gun and a vest to go out and protect the public, I think there's some inequity there. So I want to revisit that, and yes, I understand it's mid-fiscal. But we're also talking about serious investment that the town's made into developing these officers. We're lucky that we have a pretty good core of police officers that want to do this on a part-time basis. When Sergeant Nichols and I started, there were 17 reserve officers on the department. And that was 19 years ago. Prior to that, there were, at one time, there were over 30, back in the dog track days. And now we have four. And the four that we have are incredible. And I don't want to lose them because with all the training requirements that we have to go through now annually, it leaves spots in our rotations sometimes unfilled. And these part-time officers fill that role. Without them, we can't train. If we can't train, we run the risk of being decertified. So, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to go doom and gloom here, but I want to make sure that we keep what we've invested in. It's a serious thing. There are no more reserve academies. There are no more part-time academies. Those days are gone. If you want to be a police officer in this state, you must attend and pass, complete and be certified in a full-time academy. That's a big commitment to ask somebody to do on a part-time basis. So in, in the interest of securing what we have, that's the reason why I put forth the adjustment, or at least stopped the conversation of a compensation adjustment so that we can not have to worry as much about that.
I like what you just said about stop the conversation, because there's definitely a need. It's my understanding that the part-time officers and part-time dispatchers have not had a raise in a number of years. It is also my understanding that competition for officers right now and dispatchers to some degree.
Oh, yeah.
Is very keen, and other towns are outbidding other towns to gain employees.
Yeah, I mean, I'm laughing, but it's, it's, there's poaching going on everywhere. It's not just in the, in the private sector, it's the public sector too. It used to be courtesy and consideration to call an area chief and say, hey, just so you know, this person is, is interested, or this person's reaching out about a job. That doesn't happen anymore. Everybody's in the same boat.
My second question or concern is, can the town afford it? And not saying we can or can't, but I am going to ask this evening if we take this under advisement, the purpose of our police negotiator, although it is non-union, sitting down with you, George, Mr. Mullen, and work out these numbers.
Yeah.
From that point of view, what we can afford and what is justly deserved. I do have two other concerns. The impact that it may or may not have on your regular patrolmen and their union. When I negotiated with the fire department, that union discussion included concern for their call people. And Mr. Karen, I don't believe, at least I never heard from your reports, that any focus was given to the part-time officers or the dispatchers because they weren't union. Is that correct?
Uh, no, there was.
Was there some?
Right.
So I'd be interested, you know, if you could continue those discussions and, and come back with some numbers.
Sure.
The other thing is, having somewhat of transparency and discussion upon what impact a midterm increase could have with some of the other departments in town, whether they be union or non-union employees. And if we're going to open that can, I want to have a strong rationale why we're going to do this.
No, I understand that.
I, I don't think with this such short notice, I think we need time to sit down and talk about this and plan it, so.
No, agreed. And I'm a team player and I get that. I just, I'm bordering on getting a little nervous on retaining what we have because there is an appendix there with area compensation of towns that employ a reserve corps. And if you want me to share it, I'll share it, but we're, we're behind the eight falls.
Yes, no, I.
So.
Is two weeks too ambitious?
No, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
So we could vote on it at the next meeting?
Sure. And during that time, I'd love to have more conversation about it. The one thing I can assure you is on the dispatch side, there is funding in the current budget without issue.
Okay.
For that. And they're just as important, and they're the ones taking these calls, so.
Beautiful. Thank you. Mr. Karen, are you?
Just a couple of things.
Sure.
How long have you known that there was going to be an increase in minimum wage to $15?
Fair question. Long enough.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that it's necessary to come back mid-fiscal year to now claim that they're not making enough? I'm fairly of his wife's.
Yeah, no, I, so I can say this without going too, too much into it. The concern's been raised with me from some officers about having the conversations about, hey, is, is it even a possibility? Because they are getting calls from other agencies. And math is math, the numbers don't lie. And if they can do the same job somewhere else and get paid more, I get that. But what I appreciate is the fact that they're actually coming to me. Shows a little bit of respect and a little bit of loyalty to the town. So at the very least, I think it's important to bring it up, to talk about it. Because in all seriousness, we now have three categories of police officers. We have a non-bridge police officer, which means they have not attended a bridge academy. And based on the first letter of their last name, if they do not complete it by the end of fiscal this year or the end of fiscal next year, that's it. They're no longer eligible to wear a badge. Done. Then we have our bridge academy officers. Once they go through the, again, bridges, the hours they did in their part-time academy to bridge it to what the hours are in the full-time academy, that's a pretty good commitment on a part-time basis. The hours are 120 hours of actual defensive tactics, emergency vehicle training, driving, and firearms, plus all the classroom. So we're looking at about a 300-hour commitment on a part-time basis for them to get their bridge academy certification, which doesn't mean a heck of a lot unless they have 2,000 hours of patrol time before December 31st of 2027. And then we have the post-C certified officer, which can be a reserve officer that's done everything I just stated, or has gone to a full-time academy and chosen to work on a part-time basis. So with the Reform Act, a lot of this was really force-fed to these communities, and a lot of us are in the same boat with help. So again, I, I respect everything that's being talked about tonight, and I just really would love to sit down and throw that out there so that we can see what position that we're in with part-time help in the situation we could be in if we lose that. You know, we're talking about overtime, we're talking about a lot of other things that are going to affect the budget.
Mr. Karen, I just wanted to make you aware, and this really brought this issue to a level of importance for me. Recently, I was involved and received phone calls about a business in this community who requested a detail.
Right.
And we weren't able to fill that detail. There could be an up at time where we're not able to put an officer on the street because of the flu or a whole lot of people get sick. And because of the requirements of the state of who can be a reserve officer and who can't now, there aren't a whole lot of people out there to begin with. And secondly, money is going to determine where they go. We need to have some of them come here. I know this evening, we have three individuals who you are going to recommend that they be hired.
Right, as special police officers for detail work only, non-p patrol.
Now, how do you plan, since these are detail officers, how do you plan on recruiting more reserve officers, those part-time officers, if you will?
So the first would be to have it palatable to actually want to come here for money purposes. The contractual aspect of it is being able to receive a, a wage that is, you know, comparable to what they would get somewhere else. So our culture and our department and our town is, is all additional pluses, but money's going to be the first thing that they're going to ask. So if I go out and I say, hey, come on, work for me, they may love us, they may love Sergeant Nichols, they may love the, what we're doing down there, but at the end of the day, $17.33 an hour, it's probably not going to cut it for them. To put a ba, a gun, a badge and a vest on and, you know, go out into some life-threatening situations, I mean, doesn't take, doesn't take an IQ of 200 to understand that. So that's all. I really just want to open this up and, and talk about it. Something I felt strongly about for, for a while, but I haven't been in the position to do this. So now that I am, and I respect your question, because, yeah, it could have been brought up prior, but it wasn't. And so bringing it up now and hopefully we can, we can figure something out.
Mr. Mullen?
Uh, yeah, no, I just wanted to echo the same thing of the chief in my conversations with him. He has mentioned to me that this has been a priority of his. Like, and I think now is one of the first things he's looking at doing as chief. So like, with the ability he has to do it as chief, I, I have to actually focus on this issue. Like, I think, oh, you know, like I, like I really do think that says everything. Oh, you know, like in, like in prior years, in prior years, these employees have actually gone without a raise. Like, and I think again, you know, with the chief making this a priority now, oh, you know, I mean, I mean, ideally, we would have actually done it all along. Like, and I think we're, so like unfortunately needed to play and catch up and, oh, yeah, like at a time where the market is driving us really to play catch-up. So I think the timing is not ideal, but I mean, I think the chief with what, oh, you know, he has the ability to do now as a chief, oh, you know, addressing this as one of his first priorities, like I think it says everything, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mullen, you will set up?
Yes.
Schedule that works for Mr. Karen?
Yep.
Mr. Nichols, Chief Cronin? Thank you.
Great, thank you for that.
At this time, I'm, you're looking, I believe, for the appointment of Andrew LaPointe as a full-time public safety communications officer.
Operator, yes, dispatch, yes. We had a resignation two weeks ago, and we really need to fill that spot in order not to run into, again, a severe overtime issue, overworking issue, burnout issue. Andrew's been incredible, he's been with us for almost a year now, I believe, and the kid, I've never seen a kid more enthusiastic to come to work. It's refreshing, actually. He wants to help with everything he can. He's, he's been a great help with reorganizing our records, going through files from before I was born, and really cleaning things up and helping to get organized. So he's been an asset thus far, and he does incredible out. out on the desk, so he'd be a great fit, seamless.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, any questions?
No, that means we lose them under, for cable, right?
That's my understanding, I'm sorry.
Really? Um, he can't do both?
No, he packs up his hours basically working as a dispatcher, so there's nothing left.
Okay, that's unfortunate, but good for you.
Yeah, yeah, good for him, he's, he's been really looking forward to this for a while, so I'm happy for him, great kid.
Mr. Karen, I will entertain a motion to approve the hiring of Andrew LaPointe.
Make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Howell is an aye. Andrew, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We also have a request to appoint three special police officers, Kevin J. Fredette, Gilbert P. Lemer, and Joseph G. Paolo. Could you speak about these three?
I can. So special police officers en masse are basically retired officers who are just looking to do detail work, whether that's traffic duty or third-party work, as you indicated earlier, you know, perhaps the auction down the street. In this instance, Mr. Fredette and Mr. Paolo, both retired state troopers, and Mr. Lima was formerly an assistant district attorney with Bristol County District Attorney's Office. So he's, they've all been doing details for years, and now it's a matter of getting them on our roster so that we have priority to get them onto our jobs. Right now, it's kind of, they're, I guess you could call them free agents. They get called when there's excess, but in our case, it would benefit us because now they're a direct call for Dyton as opposed to maybe a, you know, a third avenue through Rainham or Berkeley or something like that. Now it'll be a direct for us. And there's literally zero cost associated with it. They keep up their CPR certification, we'll do their firearms training every year, but other than that, there's no cost.
Now, are any of these people citizens of Dyton?
No, I believe Mr. Paolo lives across the bridge, Mr. Fredette lives in Lakeville, and Mr. Lima, I believe, is for Hobus. So all close to touching our town.
Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Can we vote on all three, or do we have to make three separate motions?
So I don't, so, so, yeah, excuse me, so I don't see any issue with voting all three at once, but I would, I would recommend specifying in the motion that they be appointed special police officers for detail work only.
Okay.
That's what it, it does indicate that in my memo, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there is no expectation of patrol work from these gentlemen at all.
Thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint Kevin J. Fredette, Gilbert P. Lima Jr., Joseph G. Paolo, as special police officers for detail work only for the town of Dyton.
And make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Howell is an aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public input. Before we have public input, I'd like to go over, as usual, the rules. One, we will limit public input to five minutes per person. No disparaging remarks or complaints in regards to town employees. Should you have concerns, you should address them to the Human Resource Department, either to Karen Brady or to Mike Mullin. Thirdly, anyone who is an employee of the town who has town business should ask to be placed on the agenda through Mr. Mullin's office. And fourthly, the chairman reserves the right to ask or stop individuals who are disruptive. With that being said, is there any public input? Mr. Pacheco, please come up and for the record, state your name and your address.
Mark Pacheco, 2530 Maple Swamp. Sorry, I hate to talk this much in one meeting, so I apologize for that. I just had a little development today, so I couldn't get on the agenda, so I just wanted to keep you guys informed, and it may require action down the road. So there's nomination papers available in my, the town clerk's office for the annual town election, two positions for the DR School Committee available. In 2022, you'll remember, we had some, an elected school committee member resign, and we filled that vacancy with a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. That position was filled through the remaining term of the person who resigned, so it's 2024. The School Committee brought up to me today that the regional agreement says to the next election, which would be 2023, this one. So I, I tend to agree with the original agreement, what it says and what they, the concerns brought up in it, so I'm waiting to hear back from Town Council. That was, that person was appointed based on, in my opinion, a letter by Town Council.
I was involved in that discussion last evening. How soon do you think you'll get a response from Town Council?
I certainly hope that they respond soon.
Yeah, we will, yeah, we will make sure that we get a response from them by no later than the end of the day tomorrow.
Great. The reason being, um, the individual was caught by surprise last night.
I was caught by surprise as well.
So, um, in fairness to him, if you could reach out to him once you have a definite answer?
Absolutely.
Rather than a letter or personal touch?
I agree with you, mm-hmm, absolutely. So it may require some action, I'm not sure, we'll wait to hear from Town Council. And again, in my opinion, I think the actions taken were a result of our advice, but it's too early to, to say, and we'll, we'll wait to hear back from them.
Well, fortunately, there's enough time to get, how many signatures?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, so there's still a lot of time left, so.
Yes, yep, there is, yep, that's all I have.
Caught him by surprise?
Same, same, definitely, I think all of us, yep, thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Any further public, hi, good evening, come on up. And again, thanks for all you do back there.
I'm hoping that I can speak on this because I want to speak as the office manager of Council on Aging and not as a resident, just as a quick update on a newsletter that we sent out. I didn't think it was super appropriate to put on the agenda because it's just a quick kind of PSA, if that's allowed.
Mr. Karen?
I have no issues with that.
Okay.
Okay. We just recently, um, part of what I do for the Council on Aging is I send out the monthly newsletter that goes to every resident in town that's 60 or older, and thank you to the clerk for sending me that updated list. That hasn't been updated in a questionable amount of years, I'm not entirely sure, but it was very outdated prior. So right now, this was the first month that that was rolled out, that everybody in town who is 60 or older should have received this, and it has all of our new programming, and I wanted to come on here, because a lot of our audience in that age range do watch your meetings, either live or on the repeats. So if somebody did not receive the newsletter, I just want to be informed, so if they can call the Dyton Council on Aging at 508-823-0095, I want to make sure that that's up to date. That's all.
No, thank you very much, could you repeat that number? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, we will go on to the announcements. Please note that the townwide parking ban is still in effect through April 1st, 2023. No person shall park a motor vehicle on any street between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m. on any street. The Town of Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on January 21st, 2023, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue at the lower level. And that is the end of the announcements for today. Under whole business, review, discuss, and act on third and final reading of the ambulance billing policy.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Karen. As you mentioned, we do have the third and final reading of the ambulance billing policy. This is the third meeting it's been on the agenda. It was actually brought together and crafted along with the fire chief and his administered, his administrative assistant, Rebecca Mello, together with Town Treasurer Paul Reynolds, with Town Accountant Serena Immel, and Ms. Brady and myself. Like, we did, we did put a lot of thought into it. You have to finally bring about a process where we do have an ambulance billing and collection policy. So like, and with this, actually, auditors are coming in next week, and I think they'll be happy, uh, get to see that we have this. And that we're taking a look at other policies as well. So that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Karen, do you have any questions? We've had three readings of this, and we haven't received any negative statements in regards to it. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the ambulance billing policy as presented.
And make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second the motion. All those in favor, Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Howell is also an aye.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, selectmen's reports. Mr. Karen?
Solid waste, exciting conversation. We had a meeting two nights ago, and a lot of things were discussed. The, oh, I believe you were there. So just to highlight a few of the things, one of the things that were brought up again, was brought up again, was the mattresses and textiles being kept out of the landfill, the trash bins. The state has required that they be recycled, so we are still tweaking a policy of what to do with these mattresses, not what to do with them, but what to do with mattresses that are declined. And there's potential to have an increased cost of those, to those residents who have a mattress that is not accepted at Town, Town landfill, Town transfer station.
Yes, um, regarding the recommendations, as the Board of Health had the opportunity to weigh in on those recommendations.
Tomorrow evening, there is a joint meeting between the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. I mean, this is on the agenda, this is on the agenda for the joint meeting.
To review, discuss, and possibly act?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Another thing that we covered was the cost of the stickers. It's obviously still staying the fifteen dollars, but there was discussion as to what those stickers cover. And another thing that was brought up was an installation of cameras at the transfer station, which I pretty much think was defeated, right? I mean, I think it was, we were not going to put cameras anywhere at the, the cost.
Mr., um...
So one of the things, the highway superintendent, he does already, he does already have, he does already have mobile cameras?
Yes.
That he already has in his possession?
Right.
Uh, like, uh, I mean, my understanding is that he was going to begin using them intimately, like, with providing the adequate and appropriate notice as well.
Right, but they weren't new cameras?
No.
That, new locations, new system that was going to be recorded and viewed if there was an issue, which I think is something the attendant wanted.
Yeah, yeah, the Kim was at the highway superintendent, the, so the Kim was at the highway superintendent has, he already has them existing, so it would be no new program, the creation of anything new.
Right, which is where the considerable cost was.
Right, yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I, Superintendent Rooney stole my thunder, so I do not have a, anything from the school department. Regarding the water district, the weather has held, and the Main Street project continues. We haven't had any complaints thus far this week, so things seem to be going quite smoothly. And I, I will add that the staging area, they have been starting at seven, and not at 6:30. Mr. Mullin, FY24 budget process?
Um, yes, so like, I just, I just wanted to give the board and the public an update. Actually, last week, we sent, we sent our budget kickoff memo out to all Town of Dyton department heads, department heads and board and committee chairs, and at the kickoff of FY24 budget planning process, like, and we asked that all, like, all, all FY24 department budget requests be submitted to the county, the town accountant and the town administrator no later than Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. And one of the things we've been, like, actually discussing over the last few months, we, when we kicked it off at the Selectmen's November 30th, uh, November 30th meeting, is, like, going into FY, FY24, we're planning to utilize a zero-based budget development model to develop our FY24 departmental budgets. And, um, uh, where we're basically budgeting, where we're basically building the FY24 budget from the ground up from zero based on justified expenses. And, um, so along with the budget memo, uh, we did include, um, we did include the appropriate zero-based budgeting worksheets, like, where, and we'll be asking for, where, and we'll be asking for specific breakdowns of each appropriation as well on every line item. And, um, so, um, so, uh, so the budget, as I mentioned, the budget process, as I mentioned, just began, like, we'll have all the department board and committee proposed budgets, like, into our offices by Thursday, February 2nd. On, then on the 15th of February, we'll receive, we will be receiving the proposed, the initial proposed budget from the Dyton-Hobus Regional School District, as we discussed at the last meeting. And then, and then together with the FINCOM, one of the things we'll be seeking to do, like, actually in the next, um, three to four weeks or so, like, is having like a joint meeting with the FINCOM in advance of the budget. Yeah, like, in advance of the budget process to try to streamline the process. And, uh, so like, we'll be trying to set that up in the next few weeks. So like, then, um, so then when we get, like, like, actually to the recommendation portion at the beginning of March, so hopefully we'll have a more streamlined and way less, uh, way less, uh, uh, laborious process than we've had, uh, you know, in the last few years with having departments, boards, and committees going back and forth. Oh, you know, like, in hopes of being, like, in hopes of having a more streamlined and transparent process there. So like, I just wanted to provide an update on that, if there are any questions, does the Selectmen care?
No.
Uh, on the zero-based budgeting?
No, I mean, you hit it on the head. It's, um, starting with, with zero.
Yeah.
And, like you said, having to justify each expense as opposed to just taking last year's numbers and increasing it by 2% or whatever it be, so.
So that's the, oh, sorry.
Have you had many department heads come to you saying that this new process was difficult?
Uh, we haven't heard that it's actually difficult, but especially with, but especially with fire, police, and highway. especially with fire, police, and highway, uh, you know, there are, uh, uh, there are, uh, there are, there are a lot of contingencies, uh, with regards to car volume, uh, like, with regards to different maintenance issues, uh, you know, that, uh, you know, that we, as we go through this process, uh, we need to really look at methodologies in terms of, oh, you know, how we look at where, uh, those, so how we look at where those departments, uh, like, have actually been in terms of trends?
Right.
Oh, you know, can use that, uh, you know, like, as a very thoughtful rationale in terms of how we plan forward. Uh, we've had a few issues, uh, you know, uh, you know, just in this fiscal year alone, um, in FY twenty-three, uh, you know, that were impossible, like, if we needed to budget for, oh, you know, we wouldn't ha, we wouldn't have had any, uh, 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 we wouldn't have had any ability to plan. Um, uh, one of the things at the end of the last year, too, um, the, the Fire Department, um, I, uh, I'm actually, I actually, mid-last year, um, had, um, had a needed, a twelve-thousand-dollar repair to one of, uh, the department's fire engines. Oh, you know, like, and that happened about halfway into the fiscal year, so thankfully, the chief, oh, you know, oh, yeah, he was able to appropriately manage his budget. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but that was an expense that, oh, you know, and expenses like those, we just, oh, you know, have to be mindful of that, they happen, and we need a mechanism to, oh, like, uh, oh, you know, actually deal with that when they happen. Uh, but to, uh, 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 but to answer your question specifically, no, we haven't, uh, actually had any, so, like, so, like, so, uh, so, like, so, 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 excuse me, so, like, so, like, any concerns, but just things, oh, you know, that our departments are really asking us, so, yeah, uh, yeah, to make sure we're thinking about as, so, like, as we're going through this process, which we are.
It, it requires a lot more work on the departments.
That's why, yeah, true.
Yes, but nobody's complained yet.
Right, yes.
Um, it requires a lot more work, but a lot more thought, and I think it's only fair, if you're going to spend taxpayers' money, you, you give it as much thought as you can, as opposed to just blanket numbers.
No, thank you very much. Thank you. Um, Pleasant Street Bridge?
Yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, I'm very happy to share, uh, that, uh, that the, at the end of the last calendar year, we received word, uh, uh, that the Town of Dayton, that the Town of Dayton is going to be receiving two, uh, like, and three-quarter million dollars, um, um, in federal funding to replace the Pleasant Street Bridge, uh, that, uh, the funding was approved, uh, like, as, uh, uh, like, as part of community project funding, uh, that was actually, like, introduced and sponsored by Congressman Oshinclaw in the Congress. And, um, uh, like, and this process has been, uh, like, uh, like, actually a process that, um, actually a process that began, uh, uh, with Highway Superintendent, with Highway Superintendent Ferry and the prior town administrator, uh, back, back in twenty-eighteen, we began, uh, uh, you know, like, actually, like, planning for the assessment, uh, like, uh, 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 you know, and then the improvements on the bridge. And, um, um, and since, um, since June twenty-eighteen, the town and our residents, um, have, uh, um, have actually supported almost a half a million dollars in the planning process. Uh, you had to do the design and engineering, uh, like, and we're actually in, and we're in the final design and engineering and permitting phase right now, uh, like, uh, which is, uh, which is expected to take approximately another year, year and a half. Uh, so, um, uh, so the two and, so the two and three-quarter million dollars will cover, uh, yeah, um, out of two, out of two-point-seven-five million dollars will cover almost all of the funding. Out of to, the total, the total anticipated cost, uh, uh, like, actually based, um, on the twenty-five percent design and engineering right now, uh, 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 with contingencies and inflation, it's estimated at three-point-three million. Uh, so we will have about, um, another, um, another four-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars we need to come up with over the next few years, but, oh, yeah, like, actually, like, how, so, yeah, how, so, so actually, having a significant amount of federal funding, oh, yeah, like, it def, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, it definitely makes the project way more doable and easier. So, this is, uh, very good news that I'm very proud of.
Thank you. Mr. Kieran?
Um, I know we had come up with the five-hundred-thousand dollars as, uh, not goodwill, but to prove to the state we were serious about it.
Yeah, it has some skin hanging.
Not that I want to be greedy, but if it's going to cost us another four-hundred-some-odd-thousand dollars, is the chance, is there a chance of getting any kind of reimbursement for that?
So, um, so that's what we will be hoping to do. It's not actually guaranteed, but the two-point-seven-five million dollars, like, is coming in federal funding, but we're gonna be looking to see if we can identify any, oh, yeah, like, oh, but, yeah, like, oh, but, yeah, like, any funding at the state level?
Right.
Oh, yeah, that might be able to help us really fill the gap there. Uh, yeah, like, and that's what we'll be doing over the next year and a half.
Thank you.
Several, three questions.
Yep.
First, um, can chapter ninety money be used for this?
Yes.
So, we could expand it out over two years?
Uh, yeah, but I, I, yes, but for all intensive purposes, we've been looking to utilize, uh, chapter ninety money for the Main Street Road Reconstruction Project when we go down that road.
How many years of funding will we need for that? Just one, two?
Um, of chapter ninety funding, probably approximately two years of, of chapter ninety funding.
Now, we usually get, what, three-hundred thousand?
Yeah, just, just over three-hundred thousand, yes.
All right, so, we gotta find it someplace else.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, we're trying to leverage every type of a funding and revenue source we can at the moment, but we will be looking at any sources to try to fill that gap, yes.
Uh, next piece. I will entertain a motion to place a letter of commendation in the file of Highway Superintendent Thomas Ferry for his efforts in helping us secure this funding.
Sure, absolutely, I'd make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kieran? Chairman Hall is an aye. On the second motion, I personally had five meetings with, either in person or via Zoom, with Congressman Oshinclaw. And I know a minute ago, Mr. Mullin made reference to the former town administrator, but I know in three of those meetings, one of which was in Somerset, our ch, our town administrator, Mike Mullin, was very much a part of this. And I know there were many, many phone calls that he was involved through this process as well. And although we do an evaluation of Mr. Mullin, I, other than the evaluation process, the negotiation of wages, we have yet, in my two years on this board, commended him for his actions and for his efforts. The two-point-seven-five million is a significant grant.
Absolutely.
And with that, I will entertain a motion, and I don't know if you or I should write this, or Ms. Brady could?
Yeah, I don't have to write my own letter, but, uh, thank you.
To place a letter of commendation in the file of Town Administrator Mike Mullin for his efforts.
Sure, I would make that motion gladly.
I will step down as chair to second that motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Kieran?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thirdly, at two-point-seven-five million dollars, was part of a one-point-seven-trillion-dollar omnibus bill with every other city and town in the United States vying for a piece of that pie, as well as many nations. And the very fact that we were able to get a piece of that pie is significant. And to be quite honest, if it wasn't for the efforts of Mr. Ferry, Mr. Mullin, but especially Jake Oshinclaw, that bridge would probably be on the list to be condemned and shut down, as we have, I believe, two other bridges in town that are already closed. So, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to send a letter of thanks and appreciation to Congressman Jake Oshinclaw for his efforts in getting this funding passed through Congress.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second it. All those in favor? Mr. Kieran?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, library building project update?
So, yeah, and this, uh, this is a happy, uh, update as well, uh, very happy to report, um, that act, that, um, actually, last week, I've been losing all track of my weeks lately, uh, but last week, the first week of January, uh, uh, the first, the first phase of the building exterior project, um, at the new Dayton Public Library Building, uh, two-oh-seven Main Street begin, uh, and these efforts begin, uh, with, uh, with the building, with the building envelope and weatherization project, um, and during this phase of the project, the building shingles, uh, like, are actually in the process of being replaced, uh, uh, with historically appropriate red cedar shingles, uh, like, we're also, like, uh, we're also adding much-needed insulation to the building, uh, that is very, very, very much needed, uh, like, uh, and will be, um, and will be, and will be doing building trim work as well. Uh, so, like, so, yeah, this is a very exciting beginning of that process, uh, like, we're also, the lo, uh, the library building committee is working now, uh, uh, to, uh, to put a funding request together, uh, like, um, to, uh, to the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, uh, which we hope and expect to have done, uh, by the very early part, by the very early part of, um, the very, the very early part of next month. So, so, yeah, s, s, so, yeah, this is just the beginning of the renovation and restoration project, uh, like, uh, which if, uh, which if everything goes according to plan, oh, you know, like, and we get the additional approvals, uh, like, from the CPC, from town meeting and our residents, uh, we are actually projecting a late winter of twenty-twenty-four opening date. So, there's a lot of moving parts here, uh, but we're just, oh, you know, at the beginning now, but we, uh, just very, very, very excited to have this underway, and so, so, yeah, we have much more work to do, but we're on our way to, so actually, having a very, very nice library building that we can be proud of in town, so, I just, I just wanted to share that with the board and the public as well.
Could you also share with us the meeting you had last evening with the Historical Commission?
Yes.
In regards to the designation of the library? I believe it was a...
Yeah, yeah, so, like, in, so, like, in, so, like, in, so, like, in order to quali, um, in order to qualify for, in order to qualify for CPC funding, the building, like, in the property, uh, it needs to, uh, uh, yeah, like, it's required by, uh, the Community Preservation, uh, the Community Preservation Act statute to be deemed, uh, by the loc, the Local Historical Commission, uh, you know, like, uh, like, uh, uh, like, as a loc, uh, like, as a local building of historical significance, uh, like, and we put, uh, you know, like, a proposal, uh, like, in a request together, uh, that we went before, uh, that we went before the Historical Commission last night that was unanimously approved. Uh, so that is, again, so, so, yeah, that actually ensures our eligibility, uh, you to continue on in the CPC process, um, and if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to. So, like, we would have really to look at other funding for renovations as well. So, like, it's all, so, yeah, it's all part of a very, uh, like, involved sequencing process, again, I, yeah, one, so, yeah, so, yeah, one of the things that's very appealing is where, uh, like, uh, like, act, uh, oh, yeah, like, actually working to do everything we can. Oh, yeah, to take and make sure the funding is not, uh, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, like, actually being asked for as part of the local tax base. Oh, yeah, like, and so far, with, uh, uh, yeah, with the upper money, with the two-hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation we got from the state as well, uh, you know, like, and, uh, you know, uh, and then from the CPC, we're making sure, uh, you know, oh, yeah, that we're doing everything we can not to, uh, like, actually rely on any funding, or, so, like, very limited funding from the general operating budget, so.
Which is very important, and thank you. And, and that's not only important, but it's a commitment and a promise that we made to the taxpayers of the Town of Dayton.
The CPC money, is it allocated, not, I, I know it hasn't been approved, but is it allocated for a specific part of this project?
So, like, out of, so, like, uh, so, out of our, so, out of our projected annual revenues every year, um, of approximately twenty, so, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, uh, uh, like, approximately eighty-eight thousand of those revenues, like, are undesignated, uh, but, so, yeah, so, we, uh, 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 you, with the existing CPC balance of those revenues, uh, yeah, we have, we, we have eighty-eight, uh, uh, we have up to eighty-eight thousand dollars a year in the undesignated revenues, but then, every year, uh, like, there are also twelve-thousand dollars, twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars, oh, yeah, for, like, specifically historic projects as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, like, when you add the eighty-eight plus, uh, the twelve-five, we basically have just over a hundred thousand dollars a year for projects like this.
Thank you. Mr. Kieran, any further questions?
No, thanks.
Uh, under new business, discuss and act, composition of the Fire Station Building Committee. In November of twenty-twenty-two, Chief McGee requested that the Fire Station Feasibility Study and Building Committee include one Fire Department call member, one Fire Department full-time member, Fire Chief, one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the financial team, the Building Commissioner, and two members from the community. We posted that position, and three applicants applied. And I asked Mr. Mullin and Chief McGee if we could increase the number of members on the Fire Station Building Committee to two members from the community to three. And the major reason being, we have quite a few vacancies on committees in town at this e, at this time. And this evening, um, we have on our agenda resignations to four committees, which we're going to need to reach out and ask people to become involved with those committees. So, I, I don't think we're in a position to turn away community members who are willing to give up their time to help the Town of Dayton. So, the first motion that I will entertain is to increase the composition of the Fire Station Building Committee from two members from the community to three.
I make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second that motion. All those in favor, Mr. Kieran?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint Andrew Horton, William Mariano, and Michael Thibodeau to the Fire Station Building Committee.
Make that motion.
I will step down as chair to second that motion. All those in favor, Mr. Kieran?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you, congratulations. Mr. Horton, thank you. Review, discuss, and act, recommendation to appoint David Phillips, Jr. as a member of the Conservation Commission. There was a vacancy, um, I believe, the last time we accepted a resignation. There was a vacancy, um, I believe the last time we accepted a resignation, um, so, actually, no, this, yes, it's just actually a switch, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the person who was a full-time member is asked to become an alternate, and Mr. Phillips, who was an alternate, is asked to be appointed as a full-time member. And I also might add that today on Cedar Street, I saw him out there working with the Conservation Commissioner looking at a property, so he's been diving right in, right? Quite nicely, thank you.
As fast as my brain will let me.
No, thank you. Um, Mr. Karen, any additional comment?
No, I think it's a great move.
Yes, he definitely is a great addition to that board. Uh, with that being said, I want to entertain a motion to appoint David Phillips Jr. as a member of the Conservation Commission.
Make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second it. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Phillips, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint James Souza as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission.
Make that motion.
Uh, I will step down his chair to second the motion. Uh, all those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. I believe, Mr. Gale, the position of the, was that a vacancy that had never been filled? Or was that based on a recommendation? Oh, no, and a resignation, sorry.
There was no resignation, you know, it's a vacancy to be filled.
Okay. And that vacancy's been open for a bit?
Yes, that's correct.
No, thank you. And with that being said, um, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jennifer Dzichowski to the Commission on Disability.
Make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Ms. Dzichowski, thank you very much, um, and congratulations, welcome aboard. Now, on the next item, do we have to read each one individually, or can we take these as read?
Uh, we can thankfully take these as written, Mr. Chairman, but we do, uh, just for the public certification, there is, uh, like a, uh, there is a proposed disposition for surplus, uh, uh, of another, of a number of items from the police station. Uh, they do include Dell desktop PCs, um, a Dell server, a Dell flat screen monitor, uh, like a RICO copy print fax machine, uh, five drawer file cabinets, and actually two mongoose mountain bikes, I guess, uh, police officers are no longer riding bicycles. Um, uh, those are, uh, those are act, that was actually proposed, um, um, to be declared surplus, uh, uh, by the board, Mr. Chairman.
Now, before we vote on this, uh, they're surplus, so are we doing auction, or is he?
Yeah, they, uh, yeah, they will, uh, uh, they will be actually the first items that, uh, will go into our next, uh, to our next auction, uh, which we will likely be holding, we usually typically, uh, try to have our surplus, surplus auctions every fall. Uh, we just had one act, uh, like, uh, like actually the Building Commissioner let it, uh, like in which we, um, so in which we raised through the auction about, um, $45,000, uh, based on our, so based on our previously declared surplus items. So like, and these items will, uh, go like in, uh, into the inventory for the next auction. Uh, that will likely be held in the fall of 20, in the fall of 2023.
Thank you very much. Ms. Karen, any further?
No.
Would that be?
It's unfortunate that, uh, some of this stuff is probably in good shape that we have to dispose of it.
Yes, make some money out of it.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion to approve the items enclosed as police station surplus to be auctioned off at a time to be determined.
Make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Uh, do we have any further public input this evening? Mrs. Brady, do you have the warrant?
I have them here.
Oh, you do, good. Mr. Karen, would you?
Absolutely. Warrants for January 4th, 2022, 27A dash 23 in the amount of $121,668.88, and 27B dash 23 in the amount of $100,105.48.
Now, I believe you said 22, or is that 23?
No, warrants for Jan, well, it says 23, uh, 22 here, but it should be 23.
Yes.
Sorry.
No problem. I, um, could you ma, you made that a formal motion, correct?
Yes.
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Warrants dated January 11th, 2023.
Twenty, uh, 28, 28A dash 23 in the amount of $110,098.12, and 28B dash 23 in the amount of $100,136.59, the motion to approve.
I will step down his chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
An aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda, a letter of resignation from the Dyton Television Committee. I'd like to notify you that I will be resigning my position as committee member with the Dyton Cable Television Committee effective January 11th, 2023. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me to return to Dyton TV9 in order to solidify the station's ability to operate, continue allowing the public a clear window into municipal government, and bringing public programming to over 2,000 Dyton subscribers to Dyton TV9. The years I have spent working for the Cable Commission have allowed me to create many professional relationships, as well as continue my passion for television production for over five years. As I was able to complete my degree last year in crime and justice studies, I had been looking for an opportunity for full-time employment and have accepted a position as a full-time communications operator for the Dyton Communications Department. The committee has all my thanks, and I am excited to make this step in my career with the town of Dyton. I will entertain a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Andrew LaPointe.
And make that motion.
I will step down his chair to second it. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. I will also entertain a motion to send a letter of thanks and appreciation for Mr. LaPointe's efforts, um, on the Dyton Cable Television Committee.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I will step down to second that motion. Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda is to, a letter of resignation from Thomas Borkwin from the Community Preservation Committee, the Dyton Development and Industrial Commission, and the Open Space Committee. I will, just one sec, excuse me. I will read into the record, uh, Dear Mr. Mullen, I am resigning from the CPC, DDIC, and Open Space Committee. And he said he would be unable to attend the upcoming meeting. With that being, the upcoming meeting meaning tonight's meeting. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation from CPC, DDIC, and Open Space Committee by Thomas Borkwin.
Make that motion.
All those in, I, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Um, I'd also entertain a motion to send a letter of thanks and appreciation to Tom Borkwin for his service to the CPC, DDIC, and the Open Space Committee.
Sure, make that motion.
I will step down to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. I will also entertain a motion to post positions for the Dyton Cable Television Committee, CPC, the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, and Open Space Committees, and that those postings be for two weeks, and that the applicants be forwarded to those respective departments for interviews and recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make that motion.
I will step down to second it. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Uh, minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen, regular meeting minutes of December 14th, 2022.
Make that motion to approve.
I will step down to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of December 28th, 2022. Mr. Karen?
Make that motion to approve.
Chairman Hall, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair, uh, aye, thank you.
That's screwing you up, I know.
Um, next on the agenda is to enter into executive session, and we will not be returning to open meeting. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and if the chair so declares, I so declare, regarding Dyton Town Clerical Union. Also, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And also to approve the executive session minutes of the executive session, December 14th, 2022, and also the Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of December 28th, 2022.
Make that motion.
I will step down to second it. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you and good evening. Thank you very much.